I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Canwisher?
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Here.
Dr. Wugley?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests today, thank you for coming. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Sure anybody here who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay, moving on to board members. Ms. Anderson? Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Kunkel?
I just have one thing. I wanted to say, recognize and thank the 8th grade Junior High Language Arts Department. Recently, the students worked on a passion project that actually took them a couple months, I think, to complete. But each student picked something that they were passionate about to complete, and it had to be something new for them. It couldn't be, you know, if they played piano their whole life to continue with piano. It'd be something that they wanted to try, haven't really had the chance to, and it was amazing to go see all the work they put into their projects, how much they grew in their knowledge about their topics and potentially wanted to continue on, and I just appreciate that they took a learning standard and let the students explore something of interest to them to capture that learning standard, and it was nice to be able to go see and participate in that. So, thank you to the junior high for that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I have nothing, thanks.
Mr. Canwisher?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Finney Smith?
I have nothing.
Dr. Lewis, maybe we'll save recognition until you, to the end, if that's okay?
That's fine.
And Mr. Zimmer for you as well? Okay. Ms. Damon?
Yes, two things. There's an updated personnel agenda and a contract for the Buena Vista teacher-
Yes.
Student-teacher agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Struce?
Two things. Speaking of a personnel agenda, I just want to say thank you. As you look at the agenda tonight, it's quite lengthy. I want to say thank you to all of our staff members who've been spending a great deal of time looking at resumes, applications, interviewing people, setting up sub-plans to come in and interview. It has been a busy last month. We're getting very close to having all of our positions filled for the 22-23 school year, which is exciting for what's to come with the number of people we have, and just want to say thank you to our staff for the time that goes into it. Second, I just want to recognize that, beginning tomorrow, we'll, just the board is where we'll be having a company coming in that Kevin's been working with to put a new sound system in the boardroom here, new microphone speakers. The cameras are still on back order, so they won't be here until probably end of May, 1st of June, we're hoping, but everything should be in place by the, by that time. So, it'll help with streaming and sound as well. So, that'll be coming here shortly.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we do have some recognitions. So, Dr. Lewis, would you like to go first?
Yes, I would like to recognize a pretty remarkable 6th grader at Pleasant View. Is Luke Shields here? Luke, thank you for standing, and I would also like to recognize your teacher, Olivia Childs, who is also in the room. Luke saw a need at Pleasant View and just jumped in to take care of it. And I'm just going to read just a little bit about your project, Luke, and then we're going to ask you some questions. Maybe you'll introduce your parents if they're here with you, and we'll give you a chance to speak. So, for the past two years, Luke has put together a recycling program during lunchtime, specifically for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders at Pleasant View. He has helpers from each grade level lined up to monitor the bin daily and collects recyclable materials from student lunches. Milk cartons, plastic items are the bulk of the materials, and we are really proud of you, Luke, because you saw a need and jumped in to do it, and I'm guessing that wasn't always all that much fun. But, we want to recognize you for your good work, Luke, and see if you have anything else you'd like to share about that. Would you like to tell us a little bit more?
Luke, can you come up to the podium here so that everybody can see you and you can speak into the microphone? And if you want to bring your parents up as well, that would be great.
And you get to introduce your, if those are your sisters, all-
Yeah, you can bring your whole family up. Your whole family can come.
I'm Luke Shields, a 6th grade student at Pleasant View, and as you heard earlier, in the past few years, I've been working on this recycling project. I started it just because of what's been happening in our environment. I saw that we had lots of just recyclables that we were wasting, and I counted some data, and about, we waste about 1.5 million things across our school district each year. And I think it's really important for us to start, to recognize this, and to start recycling a lot more, because it's possible and we can do it. To do this, we would need a recycling can for each school to put recyclables in at lunch. We also need lunchroom supervisors or students to actively replace the bag when necessary and make sure everything is good with it. And we need someone from the oldest grade in the school to take it out to the recycling dumpster, and we may also need a recycling dumpster, a bigger one, at our schools to fulfill the amount of recyclables, because we had so much that it was constantly full at Pleasant View. So, yeah. I really saw a difference at Pleasant View, and I hope that we can continue it across the district.
Great. Beautiful. And so, does, can you introduce your parents first?
This is my mom, Lauren Shields.
I'm Lauren Shields.
And then this is my dad, Jacob Shields.
Great, wonderful. Do we have any questions from the board?
How hard was it to recruit other students to come and help with this project?
I just went around in classrooms, and most of them did volunteer, depending on the grade level, too, how hard it was, yeah.
How many volunteers do you think you need in order to make this successful at the school?
I, it really doesn't matter, as long as I have a few per grade. Like, some had a lot, so I just rotated it out every two weeks to make it, make sure everyone got a chance to do it.
How, now, what initially made you think that we, that you wanted to do this? Was it, did it suffer from any school project, or did you just happen to be so cognizant of recycling and you were questioning, why isn't this happening in the school?
I did question, why isn't it happening in the school? And we just returned after the pandemic, and everything was in cans, and we were just wasting a lot of cans, so that's why I started.
Great, wonderful.
Luke, what was one thing that surprised you over the last two years? It was like your biggest aha moment, you did not expect it, but it just surprised you?
Something that surprised me was how much help I got from teachers and students and everyone's.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
Well, great project, we're very proud of you for what you've done, and also your commitment to do this for two years is greatly appreciated, so we will take your advice and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, wonderful.
Dr. Wugley, in addition, I'd like to mention that early March, we had a regional and national history day competition in each of our schools, and from that regional competition, seven entries, both group projects and individual projects, were selected to go to state, which will happen on April 25th. We have a team from Bridgeview, two teams from Hopewell, two entries from Riverdale Heights, one from the junior high and one from the high school, and so we will keep you posted on what the else comes out at the end of April.
Wonderful, thank you. Good. Okay, and Mr. Zimmer?
Well, continuing with our opening theme about being the best, not in some areas, but in all areas, not for some students, for other, again, that's a laudable goal, and it is my goal to continue to bring before this board how we're striving to try and reach that, and in one of those areas, we are proud tonight to represent or to present our high school art students and their instructor, Ms. Amy Peters. And Kevin, do you have the slide brought up? And Ms. Peters, if you would like to talk a little bit about how we did at the 45th Annual Quad Cities Art Show, it's pretty amazing.
Okay. So, I'm Amy Peters, for those of you that I haven't met before, and I teach art at the high school. I teach mostly the two-dimensional art. The Quad City Arts 45th Annual High School Art Invitational, it's a show that's juried by local artists, and over the years, the amount of prizes that are given away to area students has increased every single year. This year, there were actually $7,000 that they gave away to area students. Seventeen schools participated, and so if you think about, with $7,000 in prize money divided up between, you know, 17 different schools, and we took home $1,800 of that. So, that was pretty impressive in the first place, but also, we had a student who is not here tonight, who was able to sell her work through the show. It gives kids a real gallery experience, and she had a photograph, it was a balloon from Albuquerque, New Mexico, that she sold for $100, so that was pretty cool. Yeah, so the show goes on until April 28th at Quad City Arts in Rock Island, and each of the students that I'll be presenting to you tonight are part of our AP Studio program, and so I will get the work back from Quad City Arts, I'll bring it back to school, and the next day, we pack it up to send it off to the college board to get looked at by them, so. I guess I have the thing, don't I? So, first I have Arissa Khan. Arissa is the daughter of Nafis and Amama Khan. She is my only junior that's here tonight from AP Art, so she actually has another year before she'll present hers to the college board. Arissa is a really consistent, hard worker. She's always experimenting with her painting, which obviously is paying off for her. So, she won the Natural World Award, which is sponsored by Ralph Yaccarino, and I don't know if any of you have heard of him before. He's actually been around the Quad City Arts community for a really long time, and used to have a show on PBS called Art with Mr. I. So, it's always kind of neat to hear when he thinks that our students' work is cool. So, Arissa was a $100 winner. I just turned it off, didn't I? Did I just push it again? Thank you. Okay, so next we have Katie Lee, and Katie is the daughter of Sue and John, and she is a senior this year in AP Studio Art, so her work will go off to the college board this year. Katie is really soft-spoken, but she's very powerful in our class in that when students see her working on something like this, of course, that's always going to be kind of something that motivates them to try their hardest and do their best. So, this was a winner of the Juror's Choice Award for Artistic Excellence, and she also won a fellowship.
Excuse me, one second. Arissa and Katie, can you just come up so that we can see who you are, and that way, since we're live streaming, people want to see the great work that you've done and see who's behind all that work, so congratulations. Okay, go ahead again, Ms. Peters, sorry.
So, next we have Lizzie McVeigh. Unfortunately, Lizzie is not here tonight with us, she is at the golf meet. Kids just involved in so many things, but Lizzie is the daughter of Tom and Ann McVeigh. She is also a senior in AP. Lizzie's just a really, just a ray of sunshine. One of the stories I always like to tell about her just kind of tells about her personality. Her sister is a year younger than her, and every day, she walks past our class while we're in AP, and very discreetly, Lizzie takes a picture of her every single day, walking by. I think she has one from every day this school year. So, she likes to paint scenes from her life, basically. She's got a photograph that she's painting right now of her sister at a track meet. She's got a painting that she did of her dog. This one is of Cafe de Marie in Davenport. She was the winner of the Carlos Centore Award for Excellence for $100. And then we have Lauren McGovern. Lauren is the daughter of Cameron and Amy McGovern. She is a senior in 2D AP. Lauren is a really passionate and driven artist. She always tells the story about, at some point in high school, kind of having an existential crisis and trying to decide if she wanted to do art or not, and then she just decided that it wasn't a question of, should she, it was a question of she had to do it. So, Lauren is the winner of the Senior Scholarship for, oh, did I switch it? You switched it, thank you. For her painting Appeal to Mercury. She also won Best of Show for the entire show. So, she was awarded a $1,500 scholarship, and then also, they gave her this huge, beautiful painting easel, and what was it, four or five canvases to continue her work with, so. These are artists. Did anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Congratulations, they're beautiful.
Really quickly, before we go, could I just have Lauren say a couple words about her method with this painting, because she really studied an artist that she was a fan of, Caravaggio, and looked at not only his style of painting, but how he painted and the methods that he used, so if you want to talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah, so, the first thing I did was I used like a projection of an image to kind of outline it, and then I created a base monochrome painting of black and white, and then over that thinly layered color until I achieved that result. So, it was a really cool way to kind of play with painting.
Amy, can you share the conversation we had in the hallway?
Oh, yes, I was going to talk about that, and I forgot. So, one of the coolest things, and I think this says a lot about our students in general, and Lauren, just because this isn't the first time this has happened with a student with me, but I had Lauren at Quad City Arts up by her easel, and I was taking a picture. There it is. And, you know, here she is in the midst of all this excitement happening around her, and people congratulating her on her art, and going around, and, I mean, the place was packed. And I went to take the picture, and after I took the picture, one of the first things that Lauren said to me was, where do I send my thank you note? And I thought that was really, really telling of the kind of kids we have in our district, so that was cool.
Wonderful.
Can you also share what the gentleman said to you about her work?
Which one? I had sort of-
The gentleman said, "It's beyond."
Oh, yeah, so Ralph Yaccarino, wrong artist. Nick Tijoea is a area teacher, he teaches at Central, I believe. He's been teaching art for 48 years, and after the show was over, there was a lot of teachers kind of gathered around all of our kids' work, actually, and one of them said that Lauren's work, from all the art that he had seen through all the years, he thought that her art was not only beyond college level, but definitely at master's level. So, that was pretty cool.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Wow. Do we just have one senior? Is Lauren the only senior that's here?
No. Actually, Arissa's the only junior. We had three seniors that won.
What are the seniors' plans?
Well, I plan to continue art after high school and hopefully pursue a career in the arts, and I plan on going to college and hopefully in art school.
I plan on attending the University of Iowa to major in biology and get on the pre-med track. Thank you.
Great. Well, the works are just stunning, they really are, and it's amazing that we have this talent in our district, and thank you for all your help and support of our young artists here.
They make me look-
If their parents are here, could you please introduce them, please?
Should you guys, uh, introduce your parents, if you can? Stand up?
That's my dad. That's my mom, my mama.
Well, that's my mom.
Great, wonderful.
Well, parents should be very proud of your students, your children, what they've done, it's amazing. You guys have a great talent and very proud of you, as the board has said, so thank you for sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I really wanted the actual paintings to be here, but as Ms. Peters described, they're not going to be back in the area for a bit, because the photographs do not do justice to the real thing, they just do not, so.
So, everybody just needs to go to Quad City Arts in Rock Island and see them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be, yes, absolutely. Our next recognition, I think, really goes back to this board and boards before you, looking at ways to establish relationships with our families and our students at Pleasant Valley. And they entered into a unique opportunity to establish one of the first school resource officer positions in our district. That was 23 years ago, and I have been privileged by being with this district as long as I have, to have known every single one of them, except for the first one, Brett Kilburg, who is now the sheriff of Jackson County. And I say that because the school resource officer position is unique. It takes a, it stakes a person with a special disposition to work with young students and understand that, yep, they can be quirky, and so, again, I was just elated that the first school resource officer that I got to know was Major Bryce Schmidt, who was in the back to award this, and it goes right down the line with Deputy Ruckolt, and I'm going to miss a couple. Deputy Else, who I worked with when I was the principal at North Scott, and he was with Eldridge PD, and then went, Sheriff Conard hired him over to Scott County, and I convinced at that time that, hey, can we keep him as the school resource officer for North Scott? And he ended up back here as a resource officer with, and retired with Scott County, worked at Community College, and Chad Weiper, and was outstanding. He's now a detective with the, with the group. And so, Deputy Faw is standing on the shoulders of many outstanding SROs that have come before him, and I am just extremely proud and very happy that I put the alcohol on, I thought, wow, we got the whole, from the sheriff all the way down through the chain of command, to come up and talk a little bit about, not for some students, but what you're going to hear for all. So, with that, if Jason Jones, Sheriff Lane, and your command, and Jamie Faw, come forward and talk a little bit about what happened this year.
Do I need to have my parents come up back?
You sure can. You're more than happy to meet them.
Don't forget your daughter.
Oh, that's awesome.
Jason, you better.
Who's going to present that?
What's that? Who's going to present the award?
I don't know, I think Sheriff, but you can do your stuff.
Sure. I'm going to represent the high school, and to echo what Mr. Zimmer was talking about, it is paramount for the success of the school resource officer to have a passion for kids and emphasis on relationship building. And Deputy Faw's, I think, focus on these areas, whether it's having his office door open almost at all times, to sitting down at lunches with, with kids, to hallway conversations, to coaching. The passion that he puts into our kids means a lot, and in this, this award is at the highest stakes, when it means our kids' lives. I will also say, as other districts contemplate the value of a school resource officer and that relationship, that we view this as a very important and vital piece of what we do, and so we thank you for the support of that. And from the staff, the students, and the families of Pleasant Valley High School, we thank you for your passion for our kids.
Sheriff, do you want to say some? So, I guess I'll introduce everybody up here, because Mr. Jones doesn't know all, but so this is Sergeant Loggie, my sergeant. This is Tom Gibbs, my lieutenant. This is Bryce Schmidt, as we already learned, the, the original. And then this is Sheriff Lane, so do you want to do this, Mr. Lane?
You were going to read it?
Yeah, I think, well, they may want to know what-
Exactly. Well, let me start by reading this, and then I'll say a few words. So, it's rather lengthy, so stick with me on this. It's two separate incidents. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Two separate incidents. The first one occurred on January 28th of this year, and it involves a female student here at Pleasant Valley High School. There was a male acquaintance that she, told a male acquaintance that she was going to commit suicide. The male student had nothing other than the female's student's first name and the class that they shared together. Time was of the essence, and with no actionable information to go on, Deputy Faw was contacted. Within minutes, Deputy Faw was checking his school directory, using the available clues to obtain the female student's name and address. The Bedendorf, a Bedendorf officer headed to her home, and despite the late hour and the fact that Deputy Faw had just arrived in town from Iowa City, Deputy Faw offered to meet the Bedendorf officer at the student's home. Deputy Faw took the lead, talking to both the student and the parents, and set up a meeting between the female student himself and a school counselor the following Monday. That's the first incident. The second incident took place about 10 days later, on February 7th of this year. While working at Pleasant Valley High School, he was alerted by students that a male student was going to harm himself by statements he made from home by social media. Deputy Faw notified school officials, obtained the student's address, and responded to the student's residence, along with officers from the Bedendorf Police Department. Deputy Faw and the Bedendorf officers entered the residence and located the male student in his bed. The male student was unresponsive. They discovered he had possibly overdosed on hydrocodone. Another Bedendorf officer responded shortly thereafter with Narcan, which was administered to the student, and the student regained consciousness and was transported to Genesis Hospital. Deputy Faw exhibits genuine compassion and caring for his students. He is attentive, attentive and a good listener. He makes himself available to officers of other agencies, even when he's off duty. It is obvious that Deputy Faw is deeply committed to service and enjoys working with and for his students, and he exemplifies what it takes to be an excellent school resource officer. The Scott County Sheriff's Office Outstanding Achievement Award is hereby awarded to Deputy Jamie Faw for his actions while serving as the school resource officer at Pleasant Valley High School. Go ahead. So, you were getting ready to applaud, so why not? So, I think we all know that students face more challenges, probably, than when we were kids, and their actions, such as in this case, could become- And their actions, such as in this case, could become very devastating and very permanent. And like I say, very devastating to a family and to your school, quite honestly. And I gave this award last week to Deputy Faw at another ceremony that we had at the Sheriff's Office. And I mentioned at the time that we have meetings on a fairly regular basis about the school resource officer position. And there are jurisdictions, and there are states, there are school districts in this country that have completely not just eliminated the school resource officer, but has made it illegal. And there are groups that would like the school resource officer to be in a position that is illegal and police officers even not allowed on school grounds. And that is unbelievable to me. And I think that what Jamie has done here has shown that the position of school resource officer is very, very essential. And there's nothing but benefits to having this position. And at 25 years of us doing this as a partnership between the Scott County Sheriff's Office and the Pleasant Valley High School, I think that that shows that you guys and we have, honestly, have a commitment that has been very, very effective. So, at this time, I'd just like to wrap it up by thanking Jamie for what he has done, for his community, for his school, for the kids that he cares about. And he definitely made us all look very good at the Sheriff's Office, and I really appreciate that.
So, all kidding aside, I would like to introduce a couple of people that aren't from the Sheriff's Office. My mom and dad are here, my wife and my children, and my father-in-law. And then a good friend of mine, Matt Pruitt, who goes, his kids go to Bettendorf, so. He is a PD alum, though, so I just won't let him slide. So, I really, I'm humbled and appreciate that people recognize the work I do. Sheriff Lane, I appreciate that you guys chose to recognize me. And I would say that one thing that we hear in both of these incidents and in other incidences that I deal with, is that for me, the most important way to serve the community or serve the student body is to get information from the kids, right? Because they are the ones who, they know everything, man. They know all the stuff that's going on. And in both of these incidences, you know, a student reached out to somebody because of what they'd heard. And that is huge for us at the school, right? So, when we talk about school safety, I have said it a million times probably now, is that see something, say something is the key for us to making sure our school stays safe. And in both these instances, a student reached out and said something. The other thing that I have said from the beginning, Sergeant Loggie has always supported me on, is that our students live in multiple communities that are served by multiple police jurisdictions. However, it would be, it would be, I wouldn't be negligent in my work if I just said that that student lives in that community, let that police do that. However, I feel like as a school resource officer, I, those kids are my kids, no matter where they live. And so, you know, both of these instances happen to happen with students who live in Bettendorf. And I have fostered relationships with Bettendorf police officers and Leclerc police officers as much as I can so that when our kids have an issue, they reach out to me first so we can try to find a way to help them find the best resolution. So, none of this would have been possible without the support of, you know, the Sheriff's Office when I put in weird time requests for 2:00 in the morning when I get a phone call. And of course, my wife, who sits next to me when I get the phone calls, and just says, oh, you got to do school stuff, take care of it, right? So, you know, it really is humbling to have people recognize the work I'm doing. But at the same time, I appreciate everybody's help in making that happen. Because it's not just me, it's a whole community of people coming together to make sure our kids are safe.
You know, real quick, Jamie.
Oh, I can answer questions too, yes.
We're going to cut that off there, Jamie.
We have any questions for everybody else?
I just want to say something. I've known all, as Mr. Zimmer said, we've been blessed in this district to have great people when it comes to SROs. Bryce, you were phenomenal, building relationships. You don't believe what these people do. They're almost like counselors for us at times in how they know our kids and how they respond. I look at Jamie Faw, his tireless willingness to give to Pleasant Valley is phenomenal. I can pick up my phone, I got a text call, and it's going right to him. I know he's going to answer it right away, anytime of day, anytime of night. It is unbelievable. So, thank you.
On behalf of the board, again, Deputy Faw, just wanted to thank you again. And also our Bettendorf Police Department as well for working with us and partnering with us to have and provide such good SROs. Because it takes a lot, we ask a lot of you to be an authoritative figure, but at the same time, establish relationships with these same people. And everybody who we've had, at least in the time that my kids have been in the district, have been just wonderful, upstanding people of the community, who our students can respect and who can still have a relationship with. So, it takes very special people to do that, and we, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for all the work you've done and the work we've asked you to do because you've done it extremely well, all of you. Thank you.
I apologize for being emotional, but when you say lives of kids, that's what we're about, so thank you.
Okay, so on that note, we are going to, any other recognition, Mr. Zimmer?
I'm good.
Okay. I think we've done all the recognitions today. So, we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. If you want to stay for the rest of the agenda, you certainly can. But if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, this would be a good time for you to exit as we move on to the rest of the meeting. So, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Air, signed by Mr. Cammer, sure to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of bills. We will first start with the general fund.
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the amount of $115,059.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Conklin, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $115,059.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Ms. Brockman, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, elementary, junior, high activity fund.
I move that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $11,838.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskin, second by Ms. Brockman, that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? High school activity fund.
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $122,839.05 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Mr. Cammer, sure that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pebble fund.
I move that Pebble fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $44,897.03 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Mr. Air, second by Ms. Anderson, that Pebble fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal service fund.
I move that internal service fund warrants 6352 to 6361 be issued in the total amount of $522,185.51 in the payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cammer, second by Mr. Air, that the internal service fund warrants 6352 to 6361 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And trust fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $3,307.87 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Air, second by Ms. Anderson, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to old business, we have the CNC Machinist Registered Apprenticeship update. Mr. Zimmer?
Well, as promised, when we started this back in January, that we would give an update report to the board of how this, our very first, our two very first CNC Machinist apprenticeships have been going. And before I introduce them, I want to thank again Mary Johnson, who has become my right-hand person in making sure that the students get not only the on-the-job learning stuff done, but also get the related trainings, AKA the courses, done. So, that has been a great partnership, and I just want to say thank you again very much. So, with that tonight, I'd like to start off with the person kind of in charge of the related trainings. There's two feet to this program. It's the related trainings, AKA the courses, and then the on-the-job learning. So, I'm going to ask Jeff Rose, the Long Technology Center Assistant Program Director, to talk a little bit about how the related training pieces are going.
It's almost like a high school reunion. I went to school with Jamie Faw, Matt Pruitt, graduate of Pleasant Valley. Much of the classes that I took while I was here is what's led my career to where it is now at Eastern High Community Colleges, where I oversee the advanced manufacturing programs. We've had a great relationship with Pleasant Valley. We're making a lot of changes through the registered apprenticeships, but also career academies. This fall, we'll see a number of programs rolling out new revised career academies that fit with the high schools' needs and regional high schools' needs in CNC machining, welding, engineering technology, digital modeling, and additive manufacturing. So, lots of opportunities that traditionally haven't been there in certificate offerings that we're working very closely with Mr. Zimmer to provide opportunities for that. Currently, we are lacking a CNC instructor, so I am the intern CNC instructor. So, I get to see and grade and teach these students right now in our current program. And it's great to be back in the classroom. I taught for 15 years at the university level. So, it's really nice to see that and see what they're learning and hear the stories that they're applying it. And then I also deal with the apprentices outside of the high school. So, when they're at Arconic, I'm hearing it from the high school side, and then I'm hearing it from the bargaining unit side. And, you know, how is it all working? And it's really great to hear both sides speaking how highly of the opportunities they're getting and the opportunities that are there in the future. So, what Pleasant Valley has done, I know the CNC registered apprenticeship is the first one in our area and on this side of the river, and they've done a really great job. And we look forward to keep working with the school district. Did I cover everything? Okay, perfect. Any questions that I can answer? Yeah, yeah. So, we also have, from North Scott, we have the registered apprenticeship with welding. And that's been going on two years now? I'm going to say something right around there. And so, that's worked out really well. They're being placed in a number of different companies. Eckhart, John Deere, of course, just a variety of companies throughout the area. And they're actually already had some completions with the welding registered apprenticeship also, so very, very good.
And just a reminder, North Scott was kind enough to open up some of their slots before we had a registered apprenticeship because just as Jamie Faw talked about, the working relationship between the police department, we have a close working relationship with Bettendorf, Davenport, Pleasant Valley. And we're not going to allow those boundaries to prevent our kids from entering into these opportunities until we get an opportunity to get them in ourselves, of which we're working on welding one now. So, anyway, Connor was one of the trailblazers on the welding side of it. So, that's what we're going to kind of hear about because that's what you really want to hear from. Also, it's not just the adults, but from the apprentices themselves as to some of the phenomenal experiences that they've had. Because, believe it or not, a lot of learning takes place outside of the classroom.
Great. Thank you. So, if you want to come up and introduce yourselves and let us know your name, and then if your parents are here, if you want to introduce them as well, that would be great.
I'm Connor Woodford.
And maybe talk about which, where you're at and which program.
I work at the John Deere Davenport Works Facility as a welding apprenticeship.
I'm Aiden Tany. I'm with Arconic in the machine shop under the CNC Machinist Registered Apprenticeship. I'm Clayton Shelton, and I'm doing the Arconic CNC apprenticeship as well at the high school.
Great.
Do you want to introduce your parents that are here as well?
My mother is here.
Right next to me is my mom and sister.
And mine couldn't make it out.
Great.
And could you talk a little bit about what your apprehensions and expectations were in January when you took this big step, and Connor, yours, is how it's gone since then? And what some eye-opening things that you might have participated in, both good, both, wow, I had no idea. That's what we'd like to hear. How's this experience going?
I think it's going really well. When I first got the opportunity and the chance to start the program and the apprenticeship, I thought it was going to be a lot of job shadowing and working with somebody else to learn different jobs and learn different techniques and everything. But I quickly realized that we had our own little area where we could practice and become better before we kind of got thrown into where all of your work actually mattered to the company versus we got to practice and become better. Because a lot of John Deere's welding, you have to weld to a certain size, which if you've never done that before, it becomes very hard and tricky until you get that practiced out. And then it becomes a lot easier for future job opportunities and other places of business.
Great.
So, with my on-job training and in relation to the college courses that I'm taking as well, I'd like to also acknowledge the classes I've taken at the high school as well. And I'll give you a little, I never had the intention of doing this until I had a teacher at the high school really involve me in this. And he kind of showed me the true ways of, you know, the CNC machining, the machining in general. And I caught, just, I loved it. So, I knew that I had to do something about it. And once I got a call from Mr. Zimmer last summer that, you know, we were opening apprenticeship, I was like, now, I want to do this. It took a little while before I got started, but, you know, Aiden and I, we were very flexible. And honestly, with the way that, it took a little bit longer, but everything got resolved and everything is working out good now. And I would just like to thank all of you for making this possible. Honestly, it's changed my life, and it's all because of you guys. And so, my on-job training, I get there at 7:00 every single morning. I stay till 12:30. And I, we get there, we do the safety briefing every single day. Aiden and I fill out our own individual safety papers every single day. They take safety very, very cautiously. After that, we decide, you know, we're getting into work. And it, we never leave that state of mind. And we actually work on the job floor in the machine shop. We are right along with the full-time employees. There's no difference between them and us. And we basically job shadow, and we pitch in every now and then. And recently, in this last week, they set us off. And one of the guys is behind us, and Aiden and I have been doing everything this week and a little bit of last week as well. As for, as far as the college courses go as well, they've been very, how can I explain this? Very knowledgeable. I'm very glad that I've taken these college courses and I'm very glad that the apprenticeship pays for them. I use it almost every single day in my job training as well.
Just to add on to what he said, like he said, we show up there 7:00 in the morning. We go through our daily meetings. Starts off, we go through the incidents from the previous shift, previous day. After that, me and Clayton break off. We fill out what's known as a pre-task brief at Arconic known as a pre-task brief at Arconic, that basically states what are, what are the possible risks and dangers that we'll be coming across, and how we can prevent them. That's, which I love. It's a great way to stop, slow down, think through your work, through what you're doing. It's prevented quite a few injuries, I believe. After we finish our pre-task brief, it takes about 10, 15 minutes, we get right out to work. We work with a journeyman on machines. We'll pitch in every now and then, hit a few buttons, not much. Recently, this last week, we got a job, pretty simple. We were just taking a plate down to size and putting three holes in it. Our journeyman decided to let us take over and take the plate down to size to do pretty much everything. Great. I love that. Great experience. It really helped push the ideals that I needed to better understand the CNC machines that I'll be using every day, probably for the next 20, 30 years. With the Scott classes, we started a little bit later than we'd hoped, but it, every day, we're learning a new lesson. I try to get out there about once a week, just learn the basics. Right now, we're learning the basics of a CNC mill and CNC lathe, and how to operate it, how to turn it on, program it, shut it off, the different errors or problems that might, we might come across using a CNC machine, and how to fix that, or who to notify to get that fixed. At the end of the day, it's a great program, great classes. We got off starting a little bit late. There were a couple hurdles we had to jump over, but they were handled quickly, efficiently, and it was really surprising how well they were able to handle the different issues that came across this being a new program and everything. If I had to say anything to a younger student who was possibly thinking about doing this is go for it. It's not every day you get the opportunity to work your dream job straight out of high school, and I believe that's what we're doing. It's, I can't say enough, it's a great opportunity, great, great people. And thanks to everybody who makes it possible.
Are all of you guys seniors? You have to be seniors to do this? Is that correct?
You can enter it the summer between your junior and senior year, since this was so new and the delay they're talking about. I don't know how to frame this. Arconic was about as nervous going into this as anybody. The union wasn't sure about how to handle this, and this was a big faith leap on everybody's part. And it took a lot of meeting and just talking through this. And as I told these guys before I sent them down there, I says, don't screw this up. You got one shot at this. And I got to tell you, Arconic has asked for a third. So I'll just let that speak for itself. They, once they've got down there now, it's like, you know, students can get a bad rap. These guys are starting at seven in the morning. Clayton said he's going till 12:30. Then he comes back to the high school. He takes his high school classes. Then they're heading out to the BTC centers to take their college classes down there. So it's a long day, and they are putting the time in. And I'm just very proud of you guys. Thank you. Sure, if they want to say.
Yes.
I guess I would just like to thank all of you for your commitment to this program. When Connor started high school, he was kind of not really sure. And most kids either think they know, but they don't really know what they want to do. And it started out with the influence of phenomenal teachers in the trades area at PB High School. They were exciting, engaging, encouraging the kids to try different things. I've worked at a company for many years, and I know how challenging it is to hire for the trades. And so when Connor came home, and he was like, wow, I'm going to save my money. I'm going to buy a welder. Sure enough, that kid saved up 1,200 bucks and went and bought himself a welder. He's out in the shop welding, you know? And so when he wanted this opportunity, we were able to track down Mr. Leonard Brink at North Scott. He got us involved. So when it started to transition over to Mary, and she got engaged, I was like, this is such a great opportunity. So when we think about where the world is going, I just want to continue to ask you guys to support these programs because it's critical, and they're excited about it. So, and they're working hard. Like, like Mike just said, they go to work in the morning or in the afternoon. They come here to high school, and then they're going to college classes at night and in the summer. So I guess I just say, continue to support them.
Yes. We had a challenging COVID year. I'm a single mom, and I work in the hospitality industry, which anybody that knows 24/7, 365, you don't have much free time. And COVID put me in a lot of 32-hour shifts, 30 days a week, or 30 days without a day off. Aiden raised his sister. We were panicking on what his future was going to bring. And the PB teacher, what's his name? Toll. Not only guided my son, but brought him out of a place that was pretty dark, and scared, steered him towards this. I had no idea what we were going to do with college, anything. This, literally, when they say it takes a village to raise a child, you guys at PB, I'm a PB grad. I brought him back to this area when I got pregnant with him for this reason. I have, this poor woman struck me kicking and screaming because it is hard with my schedule to get my life together, let alone try to get him with, he went through wrestling season as a senior, on top of all these college courses, everything else. And his perseverance, I didn't teach him that. That was from this, what you guys have created as a foundation. So my heart will always be for PB. You made me, created me, and you've created one of the most amazing people that will grow into the world and carry this legacy on in his career, in his future. He always has wanted to be in the military. He's super excited. He's going to do both. He's going to do everything. He's now got an album in life that he can conquer the world because you guys have given him the freedom of trying and showing him that he can do what he wants to do and not be limited by restrictions or by the cost of college or the opportunities. He's been taught that he can do whatever he wants to do, and there are no limits, thanks to programs like this. So you will always have my heart.
Thanks. Thank you. Well, I think it's just another example of how it's, as I say in the mission statement, it's not just for some students, but for all students. And this is a great example of that as well, as we've had several examples today. And we're really proud. And thank you, you three, for paving the way for others, because it was very critical that you guys stepped up to the plate, and you guys definitely did. So other students who have the same interests you do are going to be able to benefit from this. So thank you. And thanks to the parents for the support as well. And of course, Ms. Johnson, always thank you to you.
As I say, guys, great job explaining what you do. I'm very proud of you. As your parents are very proud of you. Mary, thank you for always being an advocate for the kids in the school all the time, trying to find programs like this. And Mike, thank you. Pretty cool. I mean, this would not have happened if it wasn't for Mr. Zimmer. So understand that Mr. Zimmer has taken this. He has passion for this, and just so proud of the work that he's done.
Just know that machinists, like any other, they talk. And so I've got jewel manufacturing. When are we going to get ours? Boy manufacturing, Leclerc manufacturing. So it's like, I can't get enough, I can't get enough people in it because of them talking about you and saying, this is a good deal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going on. And if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can. If you guys would rather leave, you certainly can. You guys have busy days, obviously, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Our next business is the 2022, 2023 adoption of budget and taxes. And that is Mr. Klingensmith.
All right. Tonight is the final step along the way on adopting our budget, certified budget for next fiscal year, the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. And along with that, then approving what the property tax levy rate will be for next year. We've been talking about this for the last two or three board meetings, so there's really nothing new tonight to present. We are still looking at lowering the district's property tax levy rate for next year by 30 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. You did have a document in the board packet that is, contains all of the information that we normally share with the board each year on this meeting, the one where we officially make the motion to adopt the budget for next year. I'm not really going to go through all of the pages on that. If you do have any questions on any of the pages that were in that packet, I'd be happy to try to answer those tonight. Again, the main things to point out are, again, we're looking at lowering the property tax levy rate for next year by 30 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. Also, remember, the residential rollback percentage for next year dropped by about 2%. So approximately 2% less of the assessed valuation of your home for next year will be taxable. So that will help also for next year. The other thing I was going to point out is just, you know, the district budget does continue to increase. Our, this isn't general fund, this is all funds, general fund, management fund, for all of the funds in the school district, our budgeted expenditures next year, I believe, for one of the first times in the school district's history have exceeded $80 million. Our total expenditures for next year, budgeted, are $80,72,822. So again, as the district's enrollment continues to increase, of course, that number and our revenue number continues to increase each year also. So we published, as we were required to do, in the March 31st edition of the Bettendorf News, the document that was in your board packet. So tonight, we just need to have a public hearing, and then take any comments, of course, during the public hearing. And then once the public hearing is done, you have the motion in the board packet that would need to be made. When it, if it's approved tonight, then April 15th, this Friday, is the deadline. Actually, it may be April 14th, since this Friday is Good Friday. I'm not sure if the county's open or not on Friday. But anyway, we will make sure we get it down there by Thursday of this week and file with the county auditor. So I'll take any questions, if anybody has any questions on.
Any questions from the board? Not, I will open up to a public hearing. Any questions from the public regarding this? Yes, if you could please come up to the podium and state your name and your capacity within the district?
Yes, I'm Anna Marie Gania. My, my son goes to school. I couldn't help it with the taxes, though. Wasn't there a law passed that, due to the mental illness that the state of Iowa is going to take it, it's going to be a 38 cents on a levy discount? Does that sound familiar? I read this.
Due to what, did you say?
The mental illness.
Mental illness?
That they're going to drop the levy, the levy to 38 cents?
I'm not aware of anything like that.
We can look into that and see.
I read the email. It's from ITR. That, that's what they do. They kind of let the public know about the taxes, why the levy is the way it is, and where you should look with your taxes increase, why they do. So I, maybe if I can find it in the history of my emails, that maybe I could forward them to you to maybe make a sense of what I'm trying to explain. But I wasn't really prepared to present it to you, but it just...
Yeah, if you can find that, if you can find that and forward it to us as soon as possible, just to, we can take a look at it.
I was reading, a couple weeks ago, I was reading Bettendorf, and they decreased their levy also. Could it have fallen in?
Unless it's the money that the state is receiving for mental illness, or mental, and maybe it's coming from that piece. So let us look at that and see, because there is some things that the state is giving in terms of funding.
Yes, yes. So you recall that idea?
Yeah. I mean, just from legislation that they're giving schools, in the community, money for mental health.
But they are taking out of, so they can drop the levy also.
Yeah, well, let us look in that and see.
I'll just have to look it up. I'm not sure what I did with it, but since you was talking about the levy done on me, because levy effects are taxes too. So I know it's huge in taxes, because I always claim taxes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can email Mr. Klingensmith, or myself, or Debbie Damon, it'd be great.
And their emails are on the website, so if you wanted to.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, the hearing is now closed. And with that, does somebody want to make a motion?
At this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District, held as provided by law, inviting that the notice of the time and place of hearing has, according to law, and as directed by the board, been published on the 31st day of March 2022 in the Bettendorf News, and that the affidavit of publication thereof was on file. And after hearing any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move that the board adopt the attached budget summary, together with the property tax levies totaling $13.46024 per $1,000 of taxable valuation for 2022, 2023.
Second.
Most by Ms. Conkles, second by Ms. Brockman, that at this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District, held as provided by law, and finding that the notice of the time and place and hearing has, according to law, and as directed by the board, been published on the 31st day of March 2022 in the Bettendorf News, and that the affidavit of publication thereof was on file. And after hearing any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move that the board adopt the attached budget summary, together with the property tax levies totaling $13.46024 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation for 2022, 2023. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kellersh?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkles?
Yes.
Dr. Wargley?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to new business now. We have the 2022, 2023 Certified Personnel PVEA Contract Approval. Mr. Struce and Mr. Klingensmith.
Mike, would you like to begin?
Sure, I can begin. So the state this year set supplemental state aid for next year at 2.5%. Well, because Pleasant Valley's certified enrollment, which is taken October 1st of each year, so at October 1st of 2021, our certified enrollment was up 179.4 students. So because of that, while supplemental state aid for next year is 2.5%, Pleasant Valley's new money percentage was 5.97%. So for districts that increase in enrollment, their new money is more than SSA, supplemental state aid. And for districts that decrease in enrollment, their new money would be less than supplemental state aid. So again, 5.97% was our new money, expressed as a dollar amount. Our new money for next year is $2,296,674. And basically, how you come to that is, it's the, you take the certified enrollment times what's called the district cost per pupil. Well, for next year, our district cost per pupil is $7,511. So if you take that $7,511 times our certified enrollment, and then you compare that to what our certified enrollment was, times our district cost per pupil this year, that's how you come to the $2,296,674 of new money. What we do then is we, the first things we do out of new money is we subtract off the cost of the settlements with our teachers' union, our custodians' union, and the cost of all other employee groups. We reached agreement on March 23rd of this year, so a couple weeks ago, about three, almost three weeks ago, with our PVEA, the Pleasant Valley Education Association, our teachers' union. We, we reached a 3.22% total package increase with the teachers' union. We reached a 3.22% total package increase with the teachers' union. Included as part of that 3.22% total package increase was a 7.01% increase on our health insurance premiums for next year. Also, as part of that 3.22% total package increase with the teachers, we were able to increase the teacher index base by $875. And how the teacher salary schedule works is, there's steps and lanes on the salary schedule. For each year that a teacher advances, he works another year, they move down the steps on the salary schedule. And then horizontally are the lanes. As a teacher gets additional education, for example, their master's degree, they move to the right on the salary schedule. And there's multipliers at all of those various cells on the salary schedule. Those get multiplied times that index base. So again, the index base, we were able to increase for next year by $875. So again, if you take that into consideration, along with the health insurance increase and everything else, it came to a 3.22% total package increase. Now, in regards to that insurance increase on the health insurance, it does mean that our employees will be paying more for insurance next year out of their paychecks. A few years ago, about three years ago, the district implemented a cap on how much we would pay towards single health insurance and towards family health insurance. We have a $600 cap on how much per month that we'll pay towards single health insurance, and a $1,200 cap per month on how much we'll pay towards family health insurance. We have now reached that cap on both single and family. So in the current year that we're in right now, for an employee who has single health insurance, they're having $2.47 per month withheld from their paycheck. For next year, because of that 7% increase, and because we've reached the cap on what the district will pay, the $2.47 for single will go up to $44.68. So approximately a $42, or not approximately, an exactly $42.21 increase per month, if you have single health insurance. For family health insurance, this year, the employee is paying $185.93 per month out of their paycheck. For next year, that would go up to $283.2 cents per month. So about a $98, $97 or $98 increase for next year, if you have family health insurance. We do have something where if two people who are related, both work for the district and both are eligible for health insurance, the district does pay 100% of the cost in that situation, if you have two employees who are related, like a husband and wife, who both work for the district. So that, those are the main components of the 3.22% total package increase for the settlement with the teachers' union. That was a cost, an additional cost for next year of $1,031,852. So that's a little less than half of what our new money is. Then the next thing that I subtract off from new money is the cost of all other employee groups increases for next year. And what we're doing for next year is, we met with our custodians' union just last Wednesday. Yeah, last Wednesday. We also reached, well, it worked out to a 3.23% increase for them. It's a situation where if they're raised, it was a penny less, it would have been less than 3.22%. So we always round it up. So for the custodians, it would work out to a 65%, 65 cent per hour increase to their hourly wage rate for next year to get to that 3.23% total package increase. They also would be affected by the insurance increase for next year. Then all other employee groups were also looking at a 3.22% total package increase for next year. One exception to that is, we have a position in the district, our paraeducators in the district. For those paraeducators for next year who work directly with students in either regular education or special education, we will be increasing their hourly wage rate by next, for next year, by $1.25 per hour. In comparing what they were making to other districts around here, we felt like they were behind compared to some of the other districts around here. So it was making it difficult for us to attract and retain paraeducators, especially the ones who work directly with students. So for next year, they would get a $1.25 increase per hour. But all other employees, classified employees in the districts, so your building administrative assistants, people who work in this building, as far as, you know, our payroll person and human resources person, district accountant, accounts payable person, those kind of people, our operations and maintenance people, our food service people, all of our other classified employees, it would work out to that 3.22% total package increase. And they also, of course, would be affected by the insurance increase also. So the total cost of, and also administrators, I should point out, administrators and the superintendent also would be a 3.22% increase, total package increase for next year. And total package is wages and benefits. So the cost of all that is $494,326. So if you subtract that and the just over $1 million for the cost of the teachers' settlement out of new money, that would leave just over $770,000 out of that $2,296,674 that we have for new money for next year. So the next thing that we subtract out from new money is new position, well, mostly new positions that we're looking at for next year. And I'm gonna let Mr. Struse talk about that now.
So as Mike mentioned, with our growth needs that we have, we always have to look at, how do we add or meet the needs of our students? And we're looking at some positions that we'll be adding for this coming year. There are actually about eight of them that we are looking at. So that would be coming off that 770 that Mike just mentioned. So for example, just from the sixth grade standpoint, we're adding a sixth grade teacher to Cody Elementary, so it's three sections all the way across. Forest Grove will now become a second sixth grade, so there are two sections across the board. We'll also be looking at adding an ESL teacher, do our needs. We have an orchestra teacher, one of them that we share with Bettendorf at halftime. So they're becoming full-time with us next year, instead of being split between the two districts. At the secondary level, we call it 2.5 at-large positions. So it's two and a half people that we're trying to hire. But really, what it's hard to say is it gonna be a full-time, it could be a halftime PE teacher, could be a halftime Spanish teacher, but equivalent to 2.5 is what we're looking at adding there. In addition, we are on year three of our activity stipends for coaches. We had a three-year phase of increasing their stipends. We're on the last year finishing that up now. We're also adding a one-time, or a full-time floating custodian that will be used across the district based upon where our need might be, whether it's a day shift, night shift, it could be, again, it's floating, based upon what we need there to our growth. The other thing that we'll be adding in this office, that we've talked about before, is a Director of Student Services. Director of Student Services, which you'll see in Board Policy 300 coming up, what the responsibilities would be. Really, it's all of the student services that we offer, whether it's special education, 504s, at-risk, ESL, ELP, all of those programs that we have, that they would be overseeing all of our title programs. That's what this person will be looking at, so that'd be a new position. And then along with an assistant to that position as well, administrative assistant. So you take all of those, plus last year, if you recall, we had the two Dean of Students that we added at the elementary level. And that put us over by $260,000. So we brought that back this year, took that off the top of the new money also to put that back to its ongoing funds. So we funded it for one year, now it's back in the budget to continually be into the future, being funded through our monies that Mike was referring to. So with all of that said and done, we're looking at about 210 below the number that Mike was just sharing. But we will make a lot of that up this year with our hiring practices that you've seen in terms of people who are retiring, new people that we are hiring. So we'll work through that piece with our budget with PVA as well. So that's kind of where we are at with the certified, and as Mike mentioned, some things with classified and our custodians. But negotiate with all of those. The one other thing that you will see in the certified motion that we have tonight, Governor Reynolds, as you recall, back in January, provided the $1,000 retention bonus to all, well, I shouldn't say to all, to certified staff, to teachers who were in the classroom 100% of the time. We also had some teachers who might be a .8, who would not have received those funds. It ended up being 46 people, who were either part-time or full-time, teachers, instructional coaches, teacher librarians, nurses, counselors, that did not receive the funds. So we are using part of our ESER funds to cover those 46 individuals who are certified, so that even though they weren't part of Governor Reynolds' $1,000 bonus for certified, or retention funds, we're using $46,000 to cover those people who fall in that same category. So that is why you see a motion tonight to move that forward, to use our ESER funds to cover that cost.
So that was prorated based on, like, part-time?
Yes.
.5 got 500 and?
Exactly, correct.
How's the ESL work? I'm less familiar with that. Are they located in schools, or are they floating? How does that?
Great question. So with our ESL, English second language, we will have students who, again, with their neighborhood school out there, and that's the school they typically attend. So we will have, next year, three teachers that will go to the schools and work with the students in those buildings.
So they're not located at a specific school, they float to the location that's needed?
Correct, yep. We've talked, it's neat that you say that, because we've talked about, do we ever do that with students who are coming here with no English, very, very limited English? Sometimes it's better to put them all in a classroom to work together, but we have not gone down that path yet. But it's a model we've discussed.
Typically, those ESL teachers, their home is the school that has higher rates of students learning English. And then they'll travel out to support the students in the buildings where we have lower rates of students in the program.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm not sure if I'm remembering this correctly, but for the paraeducators, when we were adding the $1.25, is that a two-year thing where we were looking? What were we looking at doing it over two years?
So we had mentioned looking at different options. And this is the one where we landed, just coming in with the $1.25. Would have probably been a 50 cent raise roughly, if we hadn't sold $1.25, 70 cents, 75 cents more, and just do it as the one-time process.
Yeah, Mike, you had mentioned that other schools were basically drawing more attention because of the pay. How disparate are they between those other districts? Are they all like pretty much in alignment? Or is there even disparity between them that's pretty significant?
Yeah, when you look at numbers, mostly you'd see they're somewhere in that $15, $50 to $17 range. This would put us in, like, $16.51, is it, or 16?
Yeah, $16.51.
$16.51. So again, we're right up at that level, that we feel that we are in a good place moving forward.
Good, thanks.
So again, the extension of the ESER funds to those 40 or so employees are because they are also, they're certified staff, and those are the people who were not eligible for other reasons, and therefore, we're just keeping consistent with giving that prorated amount to certified staff.
Yeah, and, you know, this is one that it's a struggle. It really is. You know, when it first came out, and it was going to certified teachers, and we had those who did not receive it, that was very difficult. You know, we have about 340 classified staff as well, who did not receive it. You know, last year, we gave $500 to everyone, from bus drivers to custodians, to food service, to teachers, to paraeducators. Everybody received $500. It's just different in this, with our ESER funds that we are receiving that compared to other districts, we just could not afford to take it to the next level. So it was just saying, Governor Reynolds gave this amount and tried to balance it out for those who are certified staff. So, very hard, very hard. You know, I think we'll look at, we mentioned the $1.25 for our paraeducators, regular ed and special ed. I think already looking ahead to next year, we're looking at some things in terms of longevity, of how we work with that, with our classified staff, and what that longevity to honor their years with us. Might make a change in that for next year. So looking at other ways to move forward.
And the ESER funds that we received, the distribution of ESER funds was mainly based on the amount of fee and reduced?
Title.
Title, right? So can you remind us of how much money we got compared to, let's say, Bettendorf or Davenport?
I would say our total funding was 800 and some thousand dollars, I believe. Well, for the last, the total, I mean, our total's like 1.7 million, I think, that we received. Yeah, all ESER funds, I think, we're right around, and don't quote me, but it's right around 1.7, I believe, for all that we received. That's probably the lowest of our counterparts in this area.
Davenport got 68 million.
Yeah, so we got a little over 1 million, and Davenport got 60 million. So there's a big discrepancy, there's a big difference in ESER funds. And again, it's because of how it was distributed. So I think that we, people have to be reminded of that as well. We didn't get nearly the same amount as others. I mean, there's always, there's always good and bad, don't get me wrong. But there's a definite difference in funding between the different districts. So, okay. Does anybody have any questions? And since we've kind of talked through all of the different approvals, we can just go with all, you know, go sequentially. But we can go, take the first one, if somebody wants to give a motion. Someone's gonna make a motion.
I think the board approved the 2022-2023 Certified Employee Contract Wage and Benefits Package Agreement with PVEA as presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the 2022-2023 Certified Employees Contract Wage and Benefits Package Agreement with PVEA as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kamishir?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkles?
Yes.
Dr. Walkley?
Yes. Take the next motion.
I move the board approve the use of ESER III funds for a $1,000 retention payment, $1,000 retention payment, prorated based on FTE, for the certified staff not covered by Governor Reynolds' retention payment plan.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Kamishir, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board approve the use of ESER III funds for a $1,000 retention payment, prorated based on FTE, for the certified staff not covered by Governor Reynolds' retention payment plan. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kamishir?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkles?
Yes.
Dr. Walkley?
Yes. And I'll take a motion for the 2022-2023 Classified and Administrative Wage and Benefit Package Approval.
I move the board approve the 2022-23 Classified Employees and Administrative Employees Wage and Benefits Packages as presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Conkles, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the board approve the 2022-2023 Classified Employees and Administrative Employees Wage and Benefits Packages as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kamishir?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkles?
Yes.
Dr. Walkley?
Yes. And finally, the 2022-2023 Custodial PVCa Contract Approval. Take a motion for that?
I move the board approve the 2022-2023 Custodial Contract Wage and Benefits Package Agreement with PVCa as presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the 2022-2023 Custodial Contract Wage and Benefits Package Agreements with the PVCa as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kamishir?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkles?
Yes.
Dr. Walkley?
Yes. And now we move on to our last new business agenda item, and that's the first reading of Board Policy Series 300. So we just got through with the Board Series 200. And so now it's time to read the first reading of the Board Policy Series 300. And in, I think everybody received this, right, Ms. Damon? Yeah, so there is a hard copy here. There's a lot of new information regarding the different job descriptions for the administrative staff. And so it probably is easier for you to have a hard copy of it. So that's probably why it was printed out. But Mr. Struse, do you want to discuss it a little bit more?
We won't put it up on the screen, we'll just kind of give you a quick overview tonight. So when you start reading between now and the next board meeting, we'll take questions, go over in more detail. But really, there's two parts to it. You have the superintendent's component, where a lot of the things are very, very similar from what's been there before. before. You'll see some changes in the duties, the new professional development one that came to us from IESB. That's really kind of the gist of what you will see. There's some legal references that we were supposed to add as well. So, pretty similar, but take a look through that. The biggest change is really the next section. In our current board policy that we have, we have it broken down by Assistant Superintendent, or the Director of Elementary Secondary Ed, Building Principals, and Assistants, and CFO. Well, when we talked to IESB, what they came back and said is create more of a universal, because a lot of the policies are very similar, and they thought that our policies weren't deep enough in some of our duties, is kind of what you will see. So, as you go through this, what you will see, administrative position, there's universal statement, same thing with qualifications, contract, and evaluation. Those things are all kind of similar across the board for all our building principals, deans, assistants, and so forth, and director, Mike and Sidney's positions. What the biggest change is, when it comes to functions or duties, we actually broke it out and started listing, okay, for the Director of Secondary Ed, here are the duties. Elementary Ed, here are the duties. The Director of Student Services, which we just talked about tonight, that's listed in there. And then it goes into what a building principal at each level should be doing, an assistant principal at each level, and a dean at each level. So, it actually gives you a better idea of what their duties are and what some of the expectations are in those roles. So, those are, that's more specific. Everything else is kind of universal, because the evaluation metrics is the same for all those positions. So there's no sense writing evaluation in each one of those categories. So, you can look at that. Then there's a couple new ones when it comes to, we put Code of Ethics at the end, and there's a Communication one at the end as well. And I would say, as you go through the supporting documents online, if anyone's looking at the online version, paper version's the same, but when you copy PDFs, it actually goes E1, and then E10, 11, 12, and then it kicked back to E2 through 9. So when we print them and have them in the board pocket, it'll have them 1 through 12. So there's a little bit of, doesn't seem like it flows real well online, but it'll be.
I'll fix it.
Debbie will take care of it, so.
Does anybody have any questions on this Board Series 300 or all that they, have they looked through it already and have some questions? Okay, so we will be discussing this again at the next meeting, and then at the next meeting after that is when we will actually approve it. And of course, if there's any grammatical errors or spelling errors, please let Ms. Damon know as well. That's important. Great. All right, so then there's no motion on that item. So.
Can I just, I think you all noticed, but the first page is our former contents. It is not the contents of what sits in front of you. It's just so you know where we've started.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Is there any other, any other issues at all? I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to Mike and Brian for another successful year of negotiating with the contracts. I know that's very difficult. I think the process that we have in place for the last many years has been quite successful. I think transparency is probably the most important thing, and both of you have done a great job of continuing to show transparency to all of our staff regarding the money that we get, where the money's going, so everybody's on the same page, and we can all come to an agreement over what's best for the distribution. So thank you, because I know it takes a lot of effort, and you guys spend a lot of time, and obviously, the staff and, and all the other professionals have a lot of trust in the system as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you. It is very unique. We look interest-based, problem-solving, how we go through that process. It is people sitting around a table, trusting what's going on, and having open, frank dialogue of what's best for kids. It is just a cool process that works well.
All right. And then thank you, Ms. Damon, for reading my mind about printing this out for all of us as well. So, is there anything else for the good of the order? We have, our next meeting is going to be at 5:30, so everybody mark your calendars for 5:30 on Monday, April 25th, and that's because there's the District Band Concert that evening as well. So it'll be an abbreviated, an early meeting, and hopefully an abbreviated meeting so that you, everybody can get to the District Band Concert. And that is going to be at the iWireless Center again. And then we have one on Monday, May 9th, at the regular time of 6:00 PM as well. So, anything else that anyone wants to bring up? Anything else for the good of the order? All right, then this meeting is adjourned. Brian and, there is a meeting on May-